Yeah. Yes.
The next item on the agenda is strategic priorities.
Okay, thank you. Just a brief introduction here. So in the proposed budget for police, we have three strategic priorities that are being funded. One is a police department reorganization, which is for community policing, training, which is for officer development and state standards, and then strategic cameras, which is for police response and crime prevention. Each of these items is very important to move our department forward. Before we go to item number five on our agenda where the finance director will talk about numbers, I'm going to turn it over to acting chief Nider to discuss these three priorities in more detail and answer any questions that you may have. In addition, he will talk about the building bridges program since that was raised by council member Wood several weeks ago. Acting chief Nider.
Sorry, we're gonna pull up our organizational charts.
It's simple.
Okay.
I.
Let's see the top up there.
Yeah.
To the left. Two more.
Right here.
No, above. See the top four more.
Yeah. I just can't, my face. There's. My goodness. All right.
Okay, this is our current organizational charts for our police department for the past 10 years, about six, seven years. A lot of these positions have been eliminated, especially the commander of Bureau of Support Services who retired. As you can see, it's kind of cluttered and disorganized and so we have a different vision that we're proposing tonight. You can see traffic officers are here. We don't have a traffic officer at this time. So I just want to give you all an idea of what our current organizational chart is. Right now, I am a lieutenant and acting chief and the other lieutenant is Lieutenant John Leclerc here, and it's just us as the commanders, which has been for several years. So John and I have been running the department and all these organizations in this manner that totally had it, uh, the proposed.
Assistant, yes.
Correct. And this is what we are proposing. We're proposing to add a assistant chief, which would be a, or title would be a major. And as you can see to the left here on my screen, we'll have Lieutenant Bureau of Field Operations. Who designated will be the patrol division. And to the right, we'll have Lieutenant Bureau of Investigations. Will be in charge of the detectives and a new unit. We want to create a community resource officer unit where we'll have a supervisor. You see that? Okay.
It, it is. If you can see it on, if they're looking on there, it's
Okay.
That one that's. Sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. So the goals of our reorganization is to increase greater accountability for our agency. And what we're going to be doing is we'd be eliminating a detective sergeant. We'd have three detectives. And then we'd be adding three community resource officers. And one of those community resource officers possibly be a supervisor or corporal position. So the goal, like I said, is greater accountability. We want to address community needs and further promote our community involvement. We need overall better customer service. This will provide provides more efficient, effective delivery of police services. Then we're going to add, as I mentioned before, additional command, additional commander, which we are deficient in at this time with just two of us as commanders. And let's, let's propose if we just, if we have two lieutenants and we have to conduct an internal affairs investigation, one of the commanders will have an extra layer in between. So the major would conduct an administrative internal affairs investigation on one of the two commanders. And if the major physician, if there was an internal affairs investigation, the chief of police would conduct that and so on. So it gives us a layer as you can see here. And then lastly, you know, creates opportunities for advancement for officers, you know. Officers will want to achieve goals and will have more positions. When you're a smaller agency, there's not much room for growth and development. This will add officers, you know, motivation for officers to achieve these goals. Attending specialized training to maybe for one of these promotions or one of these special assignments as a detective or community resource officer. So we're going to add, create more opportunities for our officers.
Just a clarification. We're not adding any personnel to achieve.
No, we are not adding any personnel. We are shifting positions around to create this. So we are not adding any additional police officers. We will stay our same 33 commission police officers, including the chief. So each, each division, as you can see, as I explained, lieutenant over Bureau of Investigations, he'll be an internal affairs investigator. He'll analyze crime statistics. He or she will analyze crime statistics at the firm friends. And then it will manage all the case management and case follow-up, the follow-up investigations. In addition to being in charge of the community resource officer unit, to address the community needs and social needs. And the lieutenant patrol self-explanatory, the command of patrol division. They can work with patrol officers and the main purpose of this is to develop and guide our supervisors. Right now, we do not have, we do not have the ability with all the official duties that we have to address, you know, and, you know, develop our supervisors at this time. So that'll be the patrol lieutenant's main mission there. In addition, I'm sorry, with the assistant chief, another role that the assistant people have, we are getting more and more sunshine requests. We're getting three or four a week now for our body cameras, different investigations, and it takes an average of three to four hours for one of us to address that. Right now, Lieutenant Leclerc and I are the only ones that can address those requests, court order requests, whether they're expungements or sunshine requests. And it takes easily four hours each one of us to do these per, per matter. And then finally, community resource officer division. These are all going to be bicycle certified officers. So they'll be on bicycle patrol. We're looking at increased community policing initiatives. We're going to be addressing social issues such as on health, mental health, food is insufficient. They'll be attending specialized training in all these areas. And they'll be working closely with our community health liaison. And they'll be responsible for coordination, preparation of community events. And also, as you can see here, we've eliminated code enforcement position. Our community resource officers will address any violations with residents or the businesses. And it's, what's the, the mission here is to resolve matters of code violations. So these officers would best suit that for the community to resolve the matter and work with the businesses or residents if there are code violations for that. And not to mention they'll be on a bicycle. So they'll have more opportunity to closely see any issues there. And with the community resource officer position, they will, we'll be pushing our police building bridges program. I provided pamphlets here. We do have this on our website. The best way to explain this program, it's good a slow start, but it's, it's a way to meet with those with mental health needs. Prior to police contact, we want to set up a support system. We want to set up a support system, meet with the family, meet with the individual themselves or herself or theyself on that and with our mental health liaison. Chris Bevan on that. I can give a personal example. I have a, I have a family member with a, a mental health issue. And when I became a police officer, the uniform was very terrifying to my family member. And it took many, many contacts with my grandmother and his family member to familiarize himself with who I am, what I represent. So with that being said, if we had this program, and this is the goal of this, if we could have met with somebody like my family member and his mother in a non-police situation with our mental health liaison and just kind of all work together. Because when we respond to call for service, it's very, everybody's very, you know, it's very agitated, you know. Escalations are high and the communication is, you know, is difficult there. So if we have something in place, we will know what hospital this individual will know, the doctor will know, the family member will have all this information for the officer responding. And if there's any creators per se. You know, my family member here, when, you know, I touched my face or something like that, he thought I was hurting myself. So little things like that is the goal of this police building breakers. I hope that kind of explains the mission of this. And we'll be really promoting this. And our crisis intervention officers will be more, you know, promoting this program and getting more people involved. And then the next thing is the training matter. I appreciate the councils increasing the budget last year. It was very, very helpful. We were addressing many training needs. All of our officers are out crisis intervention team certified with the exception of our new hire. So we're able to have every officer now with CIQ certified. We were able to attend additional mental health training. We added some training instructors for de-escalation, defensive tactics and firearms. We attended field sobriety training for all the officers. And we also were able to do the fentanyl and opioid training, safety training, not only for the public, but for our officers themselves. And lastly, we're able to address also wellness programs. So the goals for this year's training budget is going to be basically the same. I want, we want more de-escalation training. We want to try to attend that three, three times a year where we have a access to a simulator over Webster Rose. Officer wellness, we still want to strive to offer wellness. That is very, very important for our mission, our police department. And so such things called a human terrain mapping and students learn about such concept, concepts as advanced critical thinking, decision-making algorithm, biases and the six layers of human behavior. It's a real intense, very good program, very good training program. And then lastly, we've also added the Northwest School of Police Command. We do need our command levels to attend excellent training, additional training, myself or Lieutenant Leclerc or one of these proposed commanders. This is the two and a half month course on development for management. That's all I have on training. And then I will have Lieutenant Leclerc address the flux safety cameras.
Sure. You got about six pages. I'll just give it to you in a nutshell. Black safety cameras are automated license plate reader cameras. Neighboring jurisdictions have already started purchasing these. And strategically place them in high traffic areas. What these cameras do is they capture license plates and vehicle data of every vehicle that travels in this area, in the area that they're placed. The goal is to start off with four cameras. Like I said, this brochure will give you a little bit about privacy matters. They're all addressed in there. But this camera's loud is basically unbiased information. It's all vehicle based. It's license plates, it's models of cars, it's certain colors of our bumper stickers. There's parameters that you can set into this system and it will help you in your, your investigations. It helps a lot. We, we already have some access to the other agency's cameras, the data to help us with crimes. When we add ours, they'll help us with investigations immensely. Quick example of recent homicide we had here. One of the cameras, we would strategically place in an area where that occurred. Had those been in place, it would have been very helpful locating the vehicle that was responsible. Hopefully, we did find that, but it, it took a lot longer than if we had this system. Another benefit of this is real-time alerts. Every plate that's read by this system, it's then run through a database to compare wanted or alerts, stolen vehicle, the stolen vehicle license plate is read. Officers on patrol will receive that alert saying this vehicle was spotted in this area. Then it's up to the officer to respond to that area and investigate further. You can't just rely on, on a camera giving you an alert this farther. Obviously, the officer has to do his own investigation, but extremely helpful. It's well-known in the police world that crimes such as car break-ins, retail run-up thefts are perpetrated by people in stolen vehicles. They go commit crimes in stolen vehicles. So if we're getting alerts that these vehicles are in the area, we can kind of tailor our patrol to, to head that way and at least investigate, maybe deter. Okay. So that these cameras are very helpful in that way. Also used in missing person cases, the vehicles involved. They can be very helpful. If not, if it didn't originate here, at least in another jurisdiction, they have access to our information from these cameras. So that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'll be glad.
As you can see at the block camera, please take a look at the privacy things that matters. Okay, that is, that's a question that comes up, that may come up with this. We own the data. The police department owns the data. Okay. And a couple of key points, it's not used for traffic enforcement. There's not facial recognition software. It just captures the rear of the vehicle. So there's no personally identifiable, identifiable information in regards to the driver. So it's just the vehicle that will help part of this crime prevention. It's Lieutenant Leclerc's plan. And there's a 30-day retention period. After that, the data will be leaked. It's going to be on, my understanding, five o'clock representative and Amazon-based internet sort of matter.
I understand that the database of data is from.
Yeah.
Where are they getting their data from?
It's coming from, they've got agreement with Regis. Okay, the hot files are Regis. So they have the word, the agreements with Regis, which is our software, you know, our database, St. Louis database, regional justice information system that we use.
Well, they're, they're, they're good at certain things and not good at other things. So.
Yes, as far as that, that was the internet providers. This is, Regis is the maintain of all criminal justice records in the St. Louis region. We are looking at four to five cameras. And we haven't determined the locations that we would locate that, the person physically placed locations. Yes. Yes.
So I just want to clarify, it says no traffic. So I just want to confirm it's not gonna, you know, pull up like someone has expired tags and you're gonna issue them a ticket.
No, it's.
Can you do that with it?
I'm sorry.
Can you do that with it?
Not to my knowledge, you cannot. It will not, it will not let us know that someone's vehicle traveled through and it has expired tags. It will not be alerted for that. The alerts would be anything, a vehicle that's wanted or entered into the database, the Regis database for a stolen vehicle or if there's any other ones to that. And it also for Amber Awards, Silver Advisory, and that, you know, all that matter.
It's not connected to DMV records. So it wouldn't even come up if it was expired or not.
But if you could read it and you could access DMV records.
Yes, but you're talking about capturing hundreds of plates within seconds.
Gotcha.
Yes.
So you're not setting up alerts that, you know. So those alerts will say, you put a camera on camera. Get a part of that one southbound. So where it goes to us, where it goes to anybody surrounding it. Is there any fencing with it? Is it a rail? Kind of this position.
Yes. To answer your question, one part of that is yes, it can be shared with other agencies if we allow us, our cameras, these cameras to share with other agencies, neighboring agencies. So let's say we, we had an incident. We could share the agency. If you just had a, a yellow vehicle, partial play to this. If we had that sharing access, these agencies had our sharing access, they could get that information as well. So if it enters their jurisdiction, that will alert the officers.
If the car roll by, involving crimes, somehow flags, you get diverted, it moves out of our jurisdiction. Then put out a date, this on.
Yeah, and, and, and yeah, if you remember that we do share frequencies with surrounding agencies too. Officers scan, put their radio on scan. So we directly share with four agencies, Webster, Shrewsbury, not Richmond Heights, but what's, Rock Hill, Rock Hill, but, but, but Richmond Heights is on the other channel. So they do scan. So they hear those. So if we were to get, if our dispatcher, or we were to get an alert, say, hey, this stolen vehicle is going south on Hamley. The other agencies are hearing that over the radio. So there, there's kind of the sharing part of it.
Counselor Buckham, just to be clear, we also have to go problem, cause, or result suspicion.
Right.
Yeah, it's also a deterrent matter. So if that alerts officer, at least there would be a control power that could go in that area and possibly deter any matters of that. They're just automatically not going to pull over that vehicle. There's other parameters we have to establish.
Yeah, like you had mentioned, a lot of people. Chopper.
Yeah, and overnight, when there's a, a vehicle break-ins, if that hits a camera, at least we get some officer presence in that area and hopefully deter any incidents of that matter. Something I have to discuss with the city manager or.
Yeah. As a part of the insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is press releases.
Yeah, there's a.
I would probably say no. That was kind of a. You know.
It's not, it's not something that I would.
No. PI.
Right. It's not really something that, that came across my mind to be honest with you.
Yeah, if you've never heard of it before, and I would imagine other agencies don't, because like I said, they're already in place.
Right.
Those agencies that have them already. So.
Yeah, I just remember we checked, we have some years ago, get, get them for one of the cars.
We did have that system.
On car for a while.
Correct.
Yes, exactly.
The search reason is required for audit.
So all the officers would have access to the database, all the license plates that are collected and from other agencies as well. This, that is for an officer cannot put in a license plate, his, his son's girlfriend or, or his girlfriend's or his girlfriend's friend or whatever. There has to be a specified reason why you are looking for this plate or looking for this type of vehicle. So most likely you were associated with a documented police report. That's the reason for that.
And also, we can also narrow this down by time. So if we're having some vehicle break-ins and we've identified a vehicle as a silver, whatever sedan, whatever make and model, and we see that a lot of our incidents are occurring at two o'clock in the morning. We can set those cameras from midnight to three in the morning for that particular vehicle. So we can, and that's another audit trail that would be there. And we have to put in a reason, what the reason would be in there for audit purposes.
Just two quick questions. You had mentioned other neighboring municipalities already have these. So can you, I mean, would you share who has them? So we kind of have an idea.
Brentwood currently has several and Clay.
Clay. And this is a neighboring state as well, all the way into the west coast. That are using this camera system.
My second question is, if the initial cost is 18,000, what's the annual?
Good question. Roughly, it'll be roughly the same. It's like a lease, okay? It's roughly 2,500 hours per year per camera. The initial cost for this, if we got five cameras, is if they have to, if we decide to put on a Manchester's a state highway here still, or if there's a county road, there's permits in that with that that we have to absorb initially. Or if we have to use a utility pool or what have you for hammering, so for that nature, that's where the official cost. But after that, there's a $2,500 per camera per year.
The year it is or.
The original chart you see is very, very confusing. And there's just too much going on. This narrows the scope down and it really would assist the safety and see everything forward.
Any more questions as it relates to the reorganization, the building bridges program, training or the cameras?
Regarding training, is there, I know in your, somewhere all of your training is listed, but for the community, how do we make that as transparent as possible of what training you guys are getting and what you're implementing on an annual basis?
That's a good question. That's something I would, you know, work with Michael on, all right, and promoting that, you know, different trainings. Every, every training is is inputted in our own internal database and it's a post-certified class. Not everything is post-certified. There's a lot of in-house training, which we do have some of this post-certified. That's a Missouri police officer standardized training. All of those records are kept for the state of Missouri, a post-certified course. So I can pull up Lieutenant Leclerc and they're giving me all of those training courses per year. The way, best way to promote this to the public is just, you know, through our social media and on our website. Lauren Miller and I have been working on Lieutenant Leclerc, developing our website. Slowly, we're adding more and more what, what we do, you know. You'll see our statistics out there now. So we're working on that. That's another possibility of different training courses will be up to the line or weekly or what have you.
It's okay with council. We can go to item number five and turn it over to our finance director to talk some numbers and some other things, if that's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna start here on the summary page. As you can see, just like we did with the fire department, we've combined all of the police expense in the Prop P budget rather than having two separate budgets, budgets to try to manage and it's more sense to have all of the police expense in the Prop, Proposition P account. So that's where all the expenses are this year. So it's a little bit different. We have. Um, we have. Okay, sorry. There you go. So, um, everything is in the, is in this Prop P budget. So there won't be two separate budgets this year. Um, we have, as you can see, there's, um, an increase in. There is an increase in overall salaries. Um, part of that is we have the step increases that we have as part of our, our hiring staff. And so some, um, officers are going to be in that step increase as well as, um, where, you know, in that major position. So that's gonna be a different salary rate. So there's gonna be a little bit of adjustment there. And as you can see, um, below, um, welcome, um, there's been an increase in materials and supplies. About, of about thirty thousand, but then under other services and charges, that's gone down almost, almost eighty thousand dollars. Um, and then the capital outlay is going to be just a little bit less than it is this year, about four thousand dollars less than the current year. Um, in regards to the personnel, as you can see, there is the major position that's been added, which is the Assistant Chief. But it does not change the total number of staff for the department. So. Um, again, with salaries, we do not know our insurance rates yet, and there is no, um, cost of living or. Uh, cost of living or a merit increase or anything like that, um, after we get the revenues, projected revenues for next year at the consolidated budget in May tenth. Is when, uh, the city manager will recommend any sort of a COLO merit increase. And by then we should hopefully have at least an estimate for what our insurance rates are gonna go up for next year. We just, they don't know yet too far out. Um, so these numbers may change slightly and that would be presented, any changes would be presented at the consolidated budget meeting on May tenth. Um, so this just lists all the officers and as you can see, there are extra officers in here that weren't in here last year because they were in the, somewhere in general, somewhere in Prop P. Um, and I did want to bring two things to your attention. Um, we have the major position budgeted as well as the chief of police position, which is vacant. So both of those positions are vacant. Um, and then we have a corporal position here. And that's because we have one sergeant position that's going to be eliminated and they're going to add a corporal position. So we're gonna switch the sergeant to a corporal. So we didn't budget anything on the corporal line because I don't know exactly when that's gonna happen. I'd rather budget for the sergeant all year until we know exactly when we're gonna get that corporal. So, um, it's not changing actual numbers. It's just, we didn't wanna budget, double budget for it. Otherwise, the budget would have been really a lot higher and out of, out of whack. Um, and that is pretty much everything that we have so far. Like I said, the cost of living and merit, there is nothing in there at this time. Um, and that's pretty much all of the salaries for, um, this year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions about the salaries in particular?
I have a mechanics question. Um, in switching to this system of doing it all together, which I like, it makes sense. So my understanding is you would use Prop P money first?
Yes.
Will you use it all or is there a certain amount that you leave in reserve?
I would think, I, I mean, we'd have to look at and just kind of, it kind of depends on how the numbers play out. I would assume that we would use. All, most if not all of the Prop P money. Um, the, obviously, we do wanna have some Prop P money that is in reserve. To purchase items like vehicles, body cameras, holistic vests, things like that, that are their ongoing capital. But we also don't need to have a giant fund balance in Prop P for, and, and, and not use all of those funds. Because when you're just growing a fund balance, so we don't have a particular reason for a purchase. So we would use most of the Prop P money, I would assume, if not all. And it will really depend when we look at the numbers and see how everything, how everything goes shakes out, as well as in consultation with the chief, uh. Acting Chief of Police to make sure that there aren't any major items that we aren't aware, that I'm not aware of especially, that they're trying to. Kind of save money for. So like, for example, like the police department renovation, that would have been something that they would have saved some money, set some money aside for. And they wouldn't want to use all of their money if they're trying to build that reserve to be able to do that work. But obviously, we're using some of that reserve to do that work now. So it'd be something along those lines.
I guess my other question is if I, like Councilmember Faulkham, find this organizational chart much more pleasing and it looks nice. But it seems like it comes with a little bit of a cost, right? Because you're increasing, you're adding a very high position. And I guess I'm just looking at. The fact that, how do we plan? Because when you're adding salaries, that's something that goes up every year, right? Regardless. So our Prop P money is pretty, you know, seems to be around the same every year. And if that's not really increasing, it seems like then the. The cost comes to the general fund budget. So I'm just curious, like, do we feel that we have projected? Like our projections are good enough that we'll be able to support this increase without having to take more from the general fund?
Okay, so, um, I've kind of looked at the Prop P funding and I've noted, I mean, obviously COVID is a really hard year to kind of determine. How that's worked. But in other municipalities where I've worked, where they've also had Prop P money, I've kind of, I mean, used some of that information as well. It's, it is part of the countywide pool. So it, it kind of, it's, so it's based on countywide sales taxes. Those tend to go up steadily every year. Do they always go up as much as maybe salaries will? Maybe not, but they do, they do tend to go up. I, I mean, we're anticipating this year. Being up from last year, probably around thirty to forty thousand dollars in revenues. So, uh, yeah. Thirty to forty thousand dollars. So, um, it is, it's a significant increase. Now that may eventually level off. And at that time, that might be something that we'd have to look at tightening the belt somewhere else in order to be able to achieve that. But, um, I think at least for the not too distant future, I, I don't think that that's an issue for. Um, the Prop P to be able to absorb some of those increased costs with the reorganization. You're welcome. If there's no other questions about salaries, I can move on to just the accounts.
Just real quick on the holiday pay, why that's gone up so much year over year?
Why that's gone up so much?
Year over year.
Um, the holiday pay is based on, it takes everybody's salary. So it's based on what you earn and.
Adding the additional higher.
Yes.
Salaries adds, okay, thank you.
Okay, so if we go to the top here, the first section is the personal services. So that's just the summary or it's just the actual account line item for all of the salaries. Um, and so, um, as you mentioned, the holiday pay did go up and that was one of the items that was twenty you mentioned. Because that happens with, um, the salary raises. Otherwise, um, the other thing again is that the insurance cost, we don't know what that's going to be yet. It's not gonna go down. It's only gonna go up. It's just a matter of how much and we'll address that, as I said before, at the May tenth meeting. So then when we get into the materials and supplies section, there are a couple of items that I want to bring your attention to. The first one would be gas, oil and et cetera, gas, oil, et cetera. It's account number five zero zero five zero. Um, again, with gas prices, we don't know exactly what they are going to be. We're budgeting a twenty-five thousand dollar increase for this year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, if that, if we think that's going to change, either going up or if we might be able to reduce that some, depending on what happens with these. These talk negotiations, whatever is going on today, um, then we will adjust that again at the May tenth meeting. But we wanted to make sure we had something in there in case this situation continued and gas prices continue to skyrocket. So. I'm sorry? Yes, they have. So, I mean, it, it's looking good, but we, when we prepared this, we wanted to make sure that, that we didn't shortchange it and that the gentleman were able. Or the officers were able to get out and patrol the streets, uh, because they drive all day. Um, the only other real change, and it, it's a very slight change on general supplies, it's going up just a little bit. And that's just the general cost of expense of everything just kind of goes up a little bit. Otherwise, they're trying to hold tight on their office supplies and everything else is staying steady from the prior year. Are there any questions about the materials and supplies?
So, Councilmember, thank you. I think you and I talked about this and we do plan on having it. I've had discussions with our staff, our directors about, um. Um, based on your interests and others that have come to me, that we want to do it this fall. Uh, we haven't established the date yet, but we will soon. In fact, it's, I just, it's on my agenda tomorrow to talk about the, you know, and, and. And, and are we gonna do it the same as two, two or three years ago? Or might we tweak it a little bit? But we do plan on doing it. I can let you know as it gets closer when, when we're going to, um, when that's gonna be and how it's gonna be organized this year. But obviously, we're gonna let the community know about it in advance as soon as we can. And, um. Uh, I wasn't aware of a budget impact associated with that. Maybe, maybe others know. I, I didn't, I didn't think it had a budget impact associated with it.
With community relation supplies, the various flyers, you know, supplies for community citizens.
It's material preparation for that in culmination of, as Councilmember Schmidt, uh, those community resource packets. That we have, and the massive assault packets that all the officers provide, that's part of the policy associated, including the citizens academy.
Thank you.
Yeah, so let's talk, um, overtime, right? So in, uh, eighteen nineteen is about thirty-five thousand. We're now looking at a budget of, uh, ninety-two thousand. Um, that's almost an entire staff person. So at what point do we say we need less overtime and an additional staff person?
Um, okay. So basically, again, overtime is based on salary. So it depends on who's actually going to be working. So that's always going to increase. Um, and I think part of the, part of the situation is in, in, when, when they wanna have certain activities that occur. Um, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm, if I'm speaking, but when they wanna have certain activities occur and they have officers present at some of these events. That aren't actually going to have to leave to go to a call, there would be overtime associated with that. And I think that that's part of the, the department's dedication to make sure that they have staff present. At a lot of the different events that happen in the city. But if you want, if I'm missing something or if I'm speaking.
When we increase our training also, there's associated costs with overtime on that. We also prepare our overtime budget because in the past, there's been some civil unrest, uh, that we've had to dedicate officers for weeks at a time and multiple hours. I can just let you know, like for this year, uh, we've been fortunate with our overtime costs that we've always spent. Um, we have fifty-eight percent of our overtime budget remaining. So we are cautious about that too. Prior being, we can't keep those costs down, but we do have fifty-eight percent remaining as of, uh, then in March year, from last year.
Okay, if everybody's okay, I was gonna move on to the other services and charges section. Um, this session, this section, there are some significant changes. Um, and so I'm gonna kind of, um, point out a few of those. The first one would be the advertising account, which is six zero zero one zero. So very first account in this section. Um, as you can see, we budgeted five hundred for this year. We're budgeting fifteen hundred for next year. Um, the reasoning for that is publishing in the St. Louis American is very expensive. And especially when we're trying to get a more diverse, uh, candidate pool, we really wanna be able to advertise in that St. Louis American. Um, so we did budget specifically budget extra money for that purpose, just because it, it is a, a more expensive, uh, publication. But it, it's worth the, I think, the money, so. Um, excuse me. Um, so that was, that was the main reason for that increase. Um, the next item that we have is under care and sustenance. It's account number six zero zero eight zero. Um, that's gonna, excuse me, that's going up about four hundred dollars. And that's, um, the T-shirts for the regional, um, ninth, now, the region, was it the region? Thank you. Um, but just part of the community relation stuff. So, um, they do have that budgeted for this year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, everything else, um, the one thing I do wanna mention is that ECDC dispatching, which is East Central Dispatching. Um, again, that may change. We are still waiting to find out what that final number is going to be because of other entities dropping out. So, once we get that number, that might change a little bit at the May tenth meeting. So I'll be sure to point that out if there are any changes there. Um, everything else is pretty much the same budget as last year, where the department's really worked hard to try to keep their budget. To not increase their budget if they can avoid it and to try to cut where they can. Um, one of the items where there has been, um, a significant cut. Is, um, under professional services, we budgeted twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars this year. This year, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, they're only budgeting fifteen hundred. That is because of the consulting firm for the police, uh, but our police chief. Uh, process. So that cost will go away. Um, also, uh, there, there was a code red notification system that was in that part of that line. And that has been removed also because that's all being handled over in the police, over in the fire department. So the police department is no longer sharing. There is a, also a significant decrease in the Regis chargers, which is in IT services. That is because we quit using Regis for not just the police data, but also all of our IT services. Now that we use GoIment, um, we are actually getting better results at a, at a much cheaper cost. So we were able to reduce those costs, um, within the police department budget significantly. Excuse me. Um, I'm sorry, my allergies are really bad. So I'm really trying not to sound or cough it, y'all. Um, okay, so the next item that I wanted to bring up is, um, training, which is account number six zero five four zero. And, um, that has gone up to thirty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, part of that is it, there's been an added forty-four hundred dollars, which was for the Northwestern School of Police Staff in Command. Which is the leadership development. Um, and so it'll either be, and, and that's kind of what they're planning on doing. They may have somebody that it might switch out to be like the FBI Academy if, if, if that's something that they need to pursue instead. But they're going to try to limit that additional training expense to that forty-four hundred dollars. Um, and that's to cover all the training that, um, Acting Chief Nibber had already mentioned earlier. And then finally, the other big change that we have here in this section is. Under account number six zero nine six zero, sorry, um, we budgeted twenty thousand dollars for care. Um, and that is going down to zero. Uh, previously, officers used to call in their police reports to the system and it would type up the report. Um, the officers now just type their own report. So there's no need to continue to have that, that system and pay for that system that the officers are able to do that themselves. So. Sorry. Are there any questions about any of those changes?
Uh, we, we've evaluated the cost of that. It's going down each year. So, yeah, I know.
Okay, and then the last section is capital outlay and we are still budgeting two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for capital outlay expenditures. Um, and I'm going to jump to the capital outlay tab here because it gives more of the detail of what's going to happen. Um, again, the department is still budgeting, um, a hundred and eight thousand dollars for the three police vehicles. To do the police vehicle rotation, um, that they do every year. And that's just to make sure that they have enough. Uh, that they're able to do a continual rotation of their vehicles and not have really outdated vehicles. There is twenty-five hundred dollars that is budgeted for the athletic nets, nets for defensive tactics training. And then it's going in the new, the new renovation at the Crasco. It's gonna be in the old firehouse renovation area. It's gonna be, um, a tactical training. Spot. Um, then there is, uh, five thousand or five bulletproof vests for seven thousand dollars. Um, and that's, that's just part of the continual rotation again. Um, it's just better to do it on a, on a annual basis. Um, there is eighteen thousand dollars budgeted for the flock camera system. And I know that. There is eighteen thousand dollars budgeted for the flat camera system, and I know that Acting Chief Niver had mentioned that it was twenty-five hundred dollars per view, per camera. But there will be some additional costs for having them installed in certain places, and so that's why there's that eighteen thousand, and that's the cap that they're planning on spending, so. They're working to try to, to, they think that that should cover any additional cost for placement of the cameras. Again, the police department has the same issue that the fire department has with the radios, that they are no longer under warranty, and they do not. They're no longer under warranty, and so they're not really repairable, so they are budgeting for two portable radios for their patrol. And right now they're budgeting eleven thousand dollars for those two radios, they are working with some addition, with some other departments to try to get some. And with Motorola, trying to get some better pricing, like in the, kind of like a group purchase. To try to get that, because everybody needs to replace their, their radios, we're, we're, we're not unique in that situation. So they are trying to figure out a way to try to get some economies of scale when it comes to getting those, those radios replaced, without having to buy all of them in one year. The one other thing that I did wanna point out, there was a change. The off, the, I talked with Acting Chief Niver and Lieutenant LePierre, and. I think in the one that was sent out to council, it said, I think it said two and then a parentheses three. And cold AR fifteen rifles and then an estimated cost of four thousand, but then an actual cost of like five thousand. They were debating back and forth whether they should do two or three, because of expenses that are already within the budget, they decided to just go with the two for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So it'll be four thousand dollars, so I did make that correction in here, and it will be corrected. Yeah, I'm sorry?
Oh, do we have those already?
Yes, we do, we currently have six, there, we have nine control vehicles, and then when officers have training, there goes four, those leave us down to two. So it's just additional for that purpose, for all, to equip all the vehicles, especially for training purposes when they're out of, out of service.
What would we use one of those for?
Well, to. For incidents, you know, around the country, there is, for lack of a better term, there is heavier firepower than, than our handguns can handle. Yes, it is a last resort item, but exactly why, so our handguns or payers can't handle every single incident that comes down to legal force.
Okay, the next item is five thousand dollars for the copier scanner for the police clerk, the police clerk, clerk scans, and it's every report?
Every document.
Every document that, for the police department, and apparently it's a very, very old scanner, I didn't know what it was, but I heard it making noises when I first started. Figured out what it was, and so it is very old, it kinda makes this weird squeal sound every time it takes a page in or shuts a page through, so. The GoINet has recommended that the police department budget to replace that for next fiscal year. They also have five thousand dollars for computers, which is just part of that. Rotation that they need to have, so that way they don't have the really old computers, should, if they don't need them, obviously they wouldn't, if, if all their computers are good, they wouldn't spend that, but it. That's what the GoINet recommends, they budget for the next fiscal year. And then the last item is the big item, which is renovation for the old fire department and the police department locker room downstairs, so. We have, I believe, and I, I've spoken with Anthony on this as well, that this should be. The end, to try to finish up the renovations, both with the old firehouse area as well as the police area downstairs.
Locker rooms are essential for officers, we all have one changing area at this point, which is not sufficient for our agency. So that is a goal that, and to redevelop and refurbish the downstairs and add some more office space. For our officers, right now the officers have to type in their reports in the midst of a room, it's a multi-purpose room, so we want to add small offices downstairs.
And so that is the total of their budget, are there any other, are there any questions about any of the capital or anything else?
Couple of quick questions, the, the radios, is that two and done, or is that gonna be like next year, we need another two, kinda like the other stuff, we gotta rotate them out?
Every year.
Gotcha, and then, that, that's a purchase of a copier scanner or leasing?
That would be a purchase.
Okay, is that what we do with all our departments, we buy that equipment?
I, we lease like the big copier, but this is like a, it's a special copy, a special scanner that only works with like the Regis equipment, that's why we have a purchase.
Um, I, I just have a question related to the vehicles. Are, as we're purchasing new vehicles, are we exclusively purchasing SUVs or are we still getting sedans?
The sedans are not, no longer made by Ford, so it is SUVs at this time. And that's what most police vehicles around the country will be going to. It's the SUVs, whether it's the Dodge, Chevy Tows, Dodge Wrangler, or the Ford Explorer. Savannah would be a, no longer very complete vehicle package.
That's a shame.
I notice that Missouri State Highway Patrol, I mean, most, theirs now are all SUVs, everywhere you go, they don't, I rarely see a patrol car anymore.
I mean, it, it's clearly an issue for fuel efficiency, but also pedestrian safety, so I just, I just have issues with SUVs personally, so.
I had a question about the information at the very end, like the metrics, are we there or should I wait?
The, the performance metrics, those have not been updated yet, that's part of the budget book item, and so it will be in the budget book when the budget book is presented, so.
Um, will all the lines be filled in, cause it looks like just the one line is always filled in, but there's four up, three other lines for like.
Reports filed, the police complaints fielded, and the cabin incident, that is my goal, yes, to, to, to start, yes, to get those metrics.
And then I, I know I noticed I'd asked last year, but you know, lots changed, but is it possible to add calls to service to that too?
Call to service?
Yeah.
I guess that would be different than cabin incident, okay, yeah, we can have that, I don't, I mean, I don't see that those are problems, is there any reason why you all would see that being a problem?
No, that's our problem, the cabin incidents or weapons, calls for service, correct? It's minus administration calls. Yeah, that's something, I can work with Lexi.
And maybe it makes more sense to have calls for service rather than cat. But we, we will make sure that we address that. That is all I have, if y'all don't have any more questions.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?